We're gonna go ahead and start our meeting, so if everyone would stand, we're gonna have an invitation. Most gracious heavenly father, we want to thank you for the opportunity together here today to conduct the business of our community. We ask that you lead and guide us and give us direction, help us to make the best choices. We ask that you be with those folks that are serving our country and protect their freedom. We ask that you bless those that have served and gone on before them. We ask that you watch over this community and give everyone strength and in your son's name we ask. Amen. Let the record show that we have a quorum and Councilman Barron will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think we ought to start doing the Texas pledge.
We could do that.
I'm gonna get it printed out for you. Alright, it is at this time in our meeting that we're always glad to welcome visitors and receive public comments. We have several visitors here tonight. First of all is Karina Reyes. And she's the new chamber manager. We're glad to have you and congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have David Brunson and he's going to introduce his guest.
Can you do that now?
Yeah, sure.
Don't think that too. First, I don't think the council, I'm here representing the, there'll be a few members of the club, of course. We're gonna thank the council for their continued support there. Board's working really hard to lessen the load or to make this work. One of the things that we really wanted to do was get a head golf professional, a general manager out there. We were fortunate enough to find Mark England who came from Roswell Country Club. Mark is live PM with his daughter London and his son Langston. Mark's been here since March 5th. I'm gonna let him tell you a few things about what we've done since he's been here.
Alright, that's great. I'm Mark England. I'm the new general manager and head golf professional at Mewshue Country Club. First thing we've done is we've started doing, we're starting to create new tournaments for the facility. And we also are gonna do junior camps this summer. And they're June 28th through the 28th, or I'm sorry, June 25th through the 28th, July 16th through the 29th. And we're gonna limit those probably to about 12 kids just so that we can get a lot of one-on-one with them. And right now, the first camp's already full, so that's a good sign. We've also started two-to-one scramble, which are two-person and we're averaging roughly 20 players per scramble. So I encourage you guys to come out or have people that don't play golf, it's a good way to get started. So far since I've been here, March, April, and May, we've done a total of 1,241 rounds of golf and we've had eight new memberships. We're also doing, you know, the restaurant and lounge is doing good. We also do pool rentals for the club for members and non-members as well. That's about all I got for you all for right now. And we do newsletters and we're pretty social media active, just to try to encourage play.
Do you do the golf camps for the kids or do you help do that?
I'll do it myself and I'll probably get a high school kid to help me.
Oh, okay.
And it's from like six to 14.
Good deal.
It's the eighth grade. But I'll do another camp for the older kids, for the high school kids too. And we did one just a refresher on the rules and stuff right when I got here, 'cause all the rules changes.
Mark's also active with the mule days and kicking knots we've got that's coming up on the June 29th.
Yes ma'am.
Good thing for out there.
We want to welcome you to the community. We're glad you're here and we're glad you're out at the country club and we wish you all the success. And keep us in mind if there's something we could do for you, we'll be out there to check on you.
Excellent.
Maybe you would reteach me how to play golf.
Absolutely. He can do it. I can do it.
You're a real challenge.
On behalf of Mark, I'd extend the invitation to any council members who want to come out and look at the golf course, see what they've done out there. Come out anytime, Mark will put you in a cart and go show you the things that are going on. I think you'd be really, really impressed and really proud of the golf course that we've got.
It's in fantastic shape. A lot of compliments on the greens and court conditions.
So it's getting so pretty out there.
We're getting a lot, I'd say a lot. Several, we've got a couple players out of Lubbock who are free that's coming out here.
At least once a week.
Every week. Coming out playing in the Tuesday night scrambles just because they like the golf course and they like the people that are working there.
Lots of them bringing from the pro shop?
There are, yeah. I go out and walk every morning and I see green fee players out there in the mornings, people I don't know. So they're coming in from somewhere. Fun golf course.
That's great. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to make any public comment at this time? If not, then we'll just move right on into the agenda. The first thing we'd like to do is approval of the minutes of the May 13th meeting, our republic hearing. Do we have a motion to approve that? I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to approve the minutes of the May 13th meeting of this year. And I'll make the motion we approve those. And we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, we've already done number two. We're kinda, I got ahead of ourselves there.
That's alright.
We both have Mr. England's introduction. So we're gonna move on to item number three. Which is to consider approval of increase in green fees and the addition of a junior membership for Mewshue Country Club. The Mewshue Country Club will be increasing the green fees for weekday play to $25. Yeah, weekend play, $25 and weekday play to up to $20. And they're also adding a junior membership for new members, 35 years and younger, for $75 a month. As for our contract with Mewshue Country Club, we have to approve these changes.
Mr. Brunson might have some comments.
Since about time I'm working with the board, when I was with the city and I've been on the board since I retired. So for the last, I know, eight or 10 years, our rates have not changed. And we were absolutely some of the cheapest rates around. And Mark gets and checking with area courses, which is kinda hard to make a comparison with that 'cause our golf course is so much better than the other nine old golf courses there. All, a lot of them closed. So we're looking at that, the board is still, the weekend play, weekday play is Tuesday and Wednesday, Thursday. Weekend play is Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So the board is still discussing whether they want to go to $15 or to $20 on the weekday. So what we would ask the council to approve is an up to $10 increase on each set of green fees. And then the board can determine if they want to set those fees somewhere under that. And again, I would hope that y'all would come out and look at the golf course. I know Mark plays in some tournaments, played a lot of golf courses. I've been playing in a senior association out in Mexico, we played a lot of golf courses. Nobody's greens are better than ours. And that's pretty remarkable, less than nine golf courses. The junior membership, this is an effort that, there again, Mark brought the idea to us. A lot of golf courses do this. It's for younger families, younger officers who are starting families and maybe struggle a little bit to meet some of the full membership costs. This will give them an opportunity to come out and play some golf and hopefully get addicted so they'll be there for a long time. And I do have a little confession and I made it to the mayor earlier. When we got to talking about this, Mark had brought a lot of enthusiasm and we're really eager with this. The board, we got to talk about it, the board actually approved that. I don't think we explained to Mark that we had to come to the council first. So some of those new members that we picked up are junior members, so I do hope you approve that.
That's good.
If they're under 35, it's, they can go to junior membership now. When they turn 35?
When they turn 36.
36.
Then they would, they'll have to go to.
Okay, so it's not a grandfather then type, the other age?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's a little less than initiation fee, it's $50 a month less than the monthly dues.
Do you can get more people involved?
Maybe we could rather call.
And we're seeing some younger people, we're seeing, you know, increased activity out there. You know, like always, with the finances, we're struggling and we're hoping to address some of that with the green fees and some of the discussion that we have. Did we raise them to higher, that we run green fee players off, if we can keep it low, we'll get more out there.
You know, I don't play as much golf as I have in the past at different times, but for the golf course. And I haven't been out there recently, but I've heard lots and lots of people talking about it, of how nice it is, how good the greens are. I don't think these prices are out of line at all.
They're not, they're not, especially for the quality of the golf.
Sure.
Now, we understand also, we got to get people out here to play. And that's one thing I think Mark's working really hard with, with social media. Through Facebook, not just our Facebook account, but there's other golf group accounts we can interact with. Plus, Mark knows a lot of people, he's been in this business for a while. And, you know, we had a tournament over the weekend and I think about a seven teams, three were local and four teams without a county.
I think you've got a good approach to fixing the situation. And we all know that it's not been a great situation in a long time.
No, and the board's worked real hard and the board, you know, I hope it can stay this way. I mean, we got the same board we had six years ago. And it's a really good, solid board. They're really getting tired. The time and effort that takes to put it, that they worked real hard to put this together. And try to make it work. We think Mark is an absolute great addition to where we want to go.
Well, I personally think that you got some work cut out for you.
We talked about that before you came here.
I mean, I'm sure that you're well informed on the old deal and I'm confident that the board, because I know every one of these guys, I've known them for a long time, that they filled you in on all the uphill battles you know faced. But I really, really feel like the potential is there. I don't see any reason why that place, run the correct way, cannot support itself. And I know that you've got a good reputation, I've heard about you, pleased to meet you finally. That's my fault that I haven't. But if you're willing to put in the effort, I think it can be a really successful.
The last few years, we've essentially had one men's golf tournament. The Mewshue, that pretty much puts itself on, it's a strong tournament. And one last tournament, they run really, really well. But we need more tournaments, more activities. We need the Chamber of Commerce to come out and do a benefit tournament. Weekend before last, we did a benefit tournament for the Markle baby.
Yes.
And it was.
Seventy-two players.
Yeah, seventy-two players. And they made money, the club made a little money. So we expect to do more and more of those things. We've got many tournaments this year. We've of course got the holiday tournaments, the spring holiday tournaments.
Sure.
We just have this one.
Ten total.
Ten tournaments.
Outstanding.
I said one tournament, we actually have had four 'cause we've had the holiday tournament.
Yes.
Usually holiday scrambles, isn't it?
Yeah. The Royal Day, Lady Day, any four that you like.
We had a good turnout for Royal Day, 39 players for that.
The Tuesday night scrambles is a great place for beginners, for people who just want to play, that maybe haven't played enough to be skilled, but it's a great place to go play. 'Cause it's just a fun time to do that.
We have to get back into that.
Yeah.
And even if you're an individual, we encourage you to come out, we'll pair you up with somebody. 'Cause there's always somebody looking for a partner.
Sure. You don't think well, I don't know probably you won't.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
You change your reputation.
They play with baseballs, you do that.
On the junior membership, like Dave was talking about, I mean, that's encouraging the younger players to play 'cause that obviously is the future of the golf.
Sure.
Especially with their kids and if they're out there and they're bringing their kids out there and they fall in love with the game. That's the future of the club.
It is. And I'm sure, like I said, knowing the people that have been out there for a long time. This golf course has had a reputation over the past year of being the old boys' club. And the old boys are gone. They're just not here anymore. And something you gotta change that or it's not gonna survive.
And that's something we've had a lot of discussion about. The attitude out there has mostly changed.
Oh, yeah. It really has. And they're just talking to people.
And it's getting, you know, it's getting those folks who are not out there to realize that that's happening.
Exactly. We've gotta change the attitude of the community.
Yeah. And that's why we want to do things with Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Clubs and that. So there's some benefit tournaments out there, fundraising tournaments. You know, if we get those things done, you can boost the club. There's a lot of things we can do with local organizations that'll help them, that'll help the club, and get more people on to play golf. And that's one of the things that.
Well, I know there's, and I'm not saying this is anytime recently, it's been in the past. But a lot of people have shied away from going out there because they went out there and tried and felt like that they weren't included.
Right.
They didn't fit anybody. And that attitude, and it is changing. And I know it is.
World's different.
But it's got to change in order to get those new people out here. 'Cause if they go out there and feel like they're not welcome, they come back. And that, you know, that's a golf course or a restaurant or whatever.
A, easy funeral stake here or something.
They do.
Don't any other questions for me or for Mark?
No, but thank you for being here.
Well, again, we appreciate the support the city provides out there. Ramona and his guys help us out from time to time, we really appreciate that. Leanne of course serves on the board and tries to keep us a little bit straight.
And Parker, Parker's there.
And Parker.
Yeah, representative of council.
Anyway, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
We have the motion that we approve these changes.
Motion to approve those changes. Is there any other questions or discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is receive the financial statement for the month ending May 31st. I've dressed you all, all read through that. And anybody have any questions? I'll make the motion we approve the financial statement. Second. Any second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. That brings us to the administrating reports.
Thank you, Mayor.
The introduction. Oh, yeah. It's Monday, folks. Karina, we introduced you, wanna go? And we want you to know how happy we are that you are the new chamber manager, that you're here. And we would like to know if you'd like to tell us about what's going on and if there's any comments you'd like to make.
Sure. Well, do I need to stand up to the podium? Well, I recently just moved back to Mewshue to join my family here from San Antonio, so I'm very excited. I think the chamber is gonna be a great opportunity to meet all of our business leaders and those people in the community. And it's a pleasure to meet all of you today. I'm just excited to be involved. And one announcement, we have the Fourth of July coming up, so that's a big deal. And if I would just want to make the announcement, I would love for anyone to come stop by the chamber. I'll be there Tuesday to Friday, just to come say hello and shake my hand, so I'm very excited. Thank you for having me.
Yes. We would also like to extend to you an invitation. We meet the second Tuesday of each month at 5:30.
Okay.
Monday. And we would love to have you here if you'd like to come and keep yourself today.
So every Monday.
Tell us what's going on with the chambers.
I plan to be in groups. Sounds great.
Love to have you.
She said every Monday.
Every month.
Every month.
Every month? Every, correct, once every month.
Cycle Monday.
Got it. Thank you.
I'll do better next month. You just had to be at work with me today to understand. We're going to do the administrative reports now, so we, I'll let you take over.
Mewshue Water Park opened for the 2019 season on Tuesday, May 28th. We had 221 admissions that day, so it's a great first day for the water park. Youth Fishing Day was held on Saturday, June the first at Lake Mewshue. We had 101 young fishermen registered for that event. The winner that day was 22 and an eighth inches from a young man who had never fished very much. And it was pretty exciting for him that day. He caught several fish that day. Movie in the Park, our first one of the season will be Thursday, June the 20th, which is next Thursday, we'll be showing The Wizard of Oz. So we invite everyone to come out for a nice evening at the park for Movie in the Park. Also, for council, the TML Region Three meeting will be held on June the 20th. Also, that same night as Movie in the Park, the Scottish Rights Learning Center in Lubbock, our program will be a workshop on generational differences. So if any of you would like to attend that, if you plan to attend that rather than be at Movie in the Park, if you'd let Zainah know, she can get you registered for that. And then the library summer reading program began on Monday, June the 3rd at the library. I think council member Mendoza volunteered some over at the library and probably has witnessed some of that. So that's a great program for kids during the summer. And then at last council meeting, council requested that we report back on RVs with our RV ordinance. So I'm pleased to let you know that all of the RVs in town are currently in compliance with our ordinance. So we hope that that continues. And then finally, I'd let you know that our two cadets who are attending the Police Academy at SPAG will be graduating on July the 5th. So that'll happen before we meet again as council. So I wanted to let y'all know that we're gonna be congratulating them for their graduation and the work that they've accomplished there. The evening of July the 5th, we'll be having a reception and a penning ceremony for them at the training facility. So you'll be getting invitations for that. But they'll have family here, that's quite an accomplishment for those young men and we're really proud of the work that they've done. So anyway, they deserve that recognition. So that'll be happening on the evening of July the 5th. And that's all I have on my list, Mayor.
You got 221 people in the booth at one time?
But Saturday, we had over 300. And Friday, we had 368. Saturday, 342.
I bet you could actually walk on more.
It's a busy place right now.
Mark, you live here now?
Yes, sir.
You have family?
Yes, sir. I have a wife, Kim, and then a daughter, London, and a son, Kingston.
Good, good. Will y'all put down the Movie in the Park thing? And Karina, love for you to come. Bring your folding chair.
Yes.
Come to the park. It's a lot of fun. They sell popcorn and drinks and stuff down there.
Maybe starts in dark, quick as it's dark enough.
And I always hope the weather's. Alright, council have anything?
I noticed on the events that are planned at the country club, the chicken.
Mule days and kicking knots?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I noticed that the Mewshue Road Riders were gonna be on the rally.
They are.
Pre.
In conjunction with Mule Days and Kicking Knocks.
I just really think that's really great that they are doing that.
And we're looking to do more things and have that turn into more of an all-day event with the conclusion of the concert, you know, that evening. So, yeah, Mewshue Road Riders are participating this year, they're gonna be offering some prizes. I'm not sure I understand all the games that motorcyclists play, but you may. But anyway, I think they're, they've got several registered for that already. So, and then they'll actually have their motorcycles set up out there for people to come look at. They're pretty proud of those and.
I think the cost was $40, but they gave them into the.
They did a ticket for the concert. So tickets are $25 in advance for the concert, $30 at the door. We encourage everyone to get their tickets in advance. It's a great evening to come out and enjoy some great live music. Dolly Shine will be the headliner performers that night. Drake Hayes will be the, what do they call it, the pre-show? I don't know what they call that.
Opener.
The warm-up band, okay. So, and then there'll be food trucks there, some great food. It's just an enjoyable night. Weather's always good and lots of good time out there. Real fundraiser benefiting Meals on Wheels, the fire department.
We have a ping-pong drop, don't we, too?
Yeah, the Lions Club is.
Lions Club's doing a ping-pong drop.
Yeah, yeah. So it'll be a fun, fun day out at the country club on June 29th.
And we're talking about getting a golf tournament prior to that, too, a little scramble, two-person scramble. Because before, we didn't play golf on that day, so hopefully we can get that set up.
Or do you get tickets?
Online.
Outpost, okay.
Yes, outpost, thank you.
I think the drop, I think everybody that wants to participate pays so much for a ping-pong ball or a golf ball or whatever, and they actually drop from a high up place and whichever one lands in the.
I think Bailey County Director's bringing their boom truck out.
It's, yeah.
It'll be a pleasure.
Yeah.
It's a great thing for the community, so we invite everyone to come out to that.
Good. Anybody have anything else? Chief, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Is all silence working? Everything, sireens are all working?
Yes.
That's good?
Yes.
Are all the bad guys locked up?
Everyone of them.
Good.
Well, good. Alright, we're going to. We're going to have a new project, we're not gonna adjourn right now, we're gonna have a new project tour. And when we get back, we will adjourn. So we're gonna go to the park and the ground storage tanks, lift station, and the airport. Anybody else who wants to come with us?
Absolutely. It's our newest addition to the park. We now have a stage, a covered stage for this area out here. Ramona and his guys actually constructed, built this. We poured concrete last fall, I guess, and just finished it recently. We'll be utilizing this when we do Movie in the Park next week. As you all can tell, we've got plenty of electrical outlets and things like that. Through the years, we've had some interest, folks talked about doing some outdoor concerts and some things like that here. So that's what we're in hopes that will happen. It's just another enhancement to our park facility. So something I think council can really take some pride in and be really proud of. So again, I'd commend the Public Works Department on the construction. They had a vision for what this was gonna look like and I think a great addition to the park. Just wanted y'all to see that ramp on this side for bringing band equipment, those kind of things. Just wanted y'all to see that ramp on this side for bringing band equipment, those kind of things up, and we have stairs over here on this other side. So anyway, just wanted y'all to see that tonight while we were out.
Open to the public?
Open to the public, absolutely, absolutely.
Do you have to reserve it?
Yes, I would think if you're interested in using this particularly for an event, to call City Hall and get on the calendar, just like people do for the pavilions and stuff that we have here. We've got some great restroom facilities that are over here, too, so I think it'll be a great area. There's lots of possibilities of things that can happen here. Okay, any questions for Ramon about this, about?
Looks good.
Alright, okay, let's move on then to ground storage tanks. So these are two 350,000 gallon storage tanks. Ramon, correct me if I'm wrong, but our wells pump to our ground storage tanks. And from here, our ground storage tanks go to the overhead storage in town that then supplies residents and businesses with water. So this project was actually started last, last fall. So the tanks were built first, both of the tanks are full of water at the same time. And then we use that water both simultaneously from each tank as they go to town. So these tanks, and then this is our pump station. We actually have chlorine room on this side, and then our pumps are on the inside here. Feel free to jump in and say anything that you need to say, okay, add to that. That sounds really minimalistic for what I just said, but it's made more involved in that.
Do you have any questions? I'd rather ask some questions, you know, kind of go over.
What's the red?
The red, it's our.
Label of water?
That's for, yes, it's our flow.
It's our flow, they can tell, they can tell how much water is in there is.
Yes, sir, there's both tanks, both tanks are identical. We use a primary tank, one on the north side, our controls are based out of that one. Like Leanne said, they both fill at the same time and they draw at the same time. And like you said, our wells pump into our storage tanks. From there, we actually, from here, this pump station actually pumps to town. It's called a booster station. Literally what we're doing, pushing the water to town from here. That's why they're hired, it's a gravity, they're gravity fed, once it gets to this point, because of a mile of line we've got to push, we actually push it out. The pressure that you get at your house, that's created by the elevated storage. Look at the center of the pipe and this tank. There's water going in, water going out at the same time. But the height of those tanks create the pressure at your house. The pressure is the same, whether you have a three-quarter line or you have a six-inch line. What changes is your volume. You've got more water coming out, but the pressure is the same. There's two elevated storage in town, one at the East Park, one on 21st Street. The one on 21st Street is actually 20 feet shorter than the one at the border.
Difference in the elevation is town.
That's the difference in elevation in town, correctly, that's what it is.
So 350 gallons per tank and you've got 25 feet, so you're looking at about 15,000 gallons.
350,000 gallons.
But I'm saying per foot, per.
Oh.
About 15,000 gallons.
Yes, yes, yeah, per foot, yes. Right now, we're in the beginning stages of it. We're still connected to the old tank, so what we're trying out, we're on a control basis right now.
Does it work?
It's working, we're still working out the kinks out of it, like anything. We're going from a 50-year-old pump station to a new one. A couple of guys will come from a Volkswagen, I mean, from a Volkswagen or Cadillac.
But you're still connected to the old tank?
Right now, we're still connected, it's a matter of fact, the gas contractor's here. They're digging it up, sometime this week we'll do a cut and plug. We'll actually.
Why would you not put a valve in there for emergency use in case you had some problems?
We do have a valve in place.
So you could put water in it if you had to.
Yes.
But at some point in time, that old tank will be demolished, it will go away.
And that's what I was going to say, yeah. At some point, we have to demolish it.
Let's move on in. To the pump station, you saw we have an overhead door so that we'll be able to back vehicles in, winches and things like that, anything that we would need to do with that. We have a control room over here where they're able to monitor all of the tanks, wells that are coming in. We have three pumps here and they will be rotated. So we can use one, we can use all three most of the time, and we're like two at a time.
These is what we.
Most of the twelve gears, so I actually connect to the group contacts out there. Those microwings. We actually need to be, you know, we're set up on this KDA system, which is computerized, and it's controlled by the control system in there. Sometime probably this week, if not next week, they'll come in and paint all this pipe with a finish product. Each one of these motors has the capability of pumping 1200 gallons a minute. So we, you know, like Leanne was saying, we have a primary, a leg pumping and a standby. The standby, if the family comes on, we need water in town, so. We're proud of this project, you know, it's been in the works for years.
Yes, you want to show, you might want to follow me there and go get that and show me how that, how all that works.
Yes, that is controlled. The level is caused for water. Kind of depend on the level, like I say, it's computerized. That one's based on pressure. But right now, as you can tell, we've got the flow, the wells are on, they're coming in right now. We're able to control the whole from here. I can change settings. There, it tells me if a well's on, if it's communicating. When we hit a 517, that means there's a problem communicating.
So you got one off right there?
Yes.
All the rest of them are on?
Two off.
Well, they've been on.
You've got two off?
Yeah, right now.
So you rotate them?
Turn auto, right now, the ones that are safe run or the ones that are running, all the others are off. We're able to alternate wells.
This is how much you're pulling in here per minute? How many gallons?
Right now, it's, yeah. Those wells are on, are producing 418 gallons per minute. They're shutting down, as you can tell, they're cooling down. In my office, I have a laptop, all this is showing as well.
It's all connected to you? You can run it from your laptop, can you do it on your phone?
No, not this one. I can do it on my laptop.
We someday have a.
Their capabilities going that way.
We're putting in some. I have five different wells that are available to run at the potato shed. And we're putting those skate systems on there, where I can start it on my phone from the shed, whichever ones I want to use to give me however much water. And we run the rest of the systems on the farm on the phone, but this is just for me to bring to the sheds.
That's generally a backup. All it does is, we have generated the outside.
New one?
It's a brand-new one, that is required by TCUQ, and we have standby mode, which lets me do that. All this is moderate, you know, if you're aware, it's the old piece, the old piece of those wells. The motor, if you use more power, it picks it, it's a very low speed. This is me, Ken's need, and it's different. Very little. Most of the Algalala does not recharge.
Yeah, it's too neat.
Have you seen Kansas River lately? I'm hoping some of that water will eventually make it over here. I'd hear, you know, so. Yes, sir, yes. Chlorine. This, it's set up, there's alarms for, per whether, we get a tank, we're not on, if a well, if the station's gone, our well will come on, if it doesn't come on, it'll cycle there. And if it doesn't start, it's in the third cycle, we'll get a text and say something's wrong. So come check.
So we believe this is a facility that'll serve Milschew for a long, long time, and serve Milschew very well. I think as Ramon said, that tank over there is 50-plus years old and has served us very well. But it's become time for us to, for my, make improvements. And so for the future of Milschew, I think, council and me, we appreciate your forethought and moving forward with this project. Okay, if anybody has any more questions, get Ramon to answer for this.
We have a backup generator, stand-by, so that is required by TCUQ. There's a brand-new generator that's fixed facility. I kind of, you know, if something happens to this pump station, I can still bypass it. I can pump directly from the wells to the elevator. So that's, given the force of gravity, you know. The capacity of our tanks in town is 700,000 gallons. We have 200,000 and 500,000. During the winter months, we use between 700 and 800,000 gallons. During the summer months, we use closer to 80,000 gallons. So during the winter months, I have enough water for it. But that's, we will definitely go in the streets and, you know, we'll make a pass.
Okay, let's move on to the lift station. The lift station, it doesn't look like much on top of the ground, but believe me, it is. There's a lot going on below the ground, you can probably hear some of that right now. This lift station replaced the original lift station that was built, well, I guess it was the second lift station, wasn't it? And it was built when?
1968.
1968. So that lift station served us well, but this one actually accomplished several things for us. I think flow may be a little bit greater, accomplished some safety concerns that we had for our folks. So if I'm understanding this correctly, sewer from town all comes through here and then it's all pushed out to our sewer treatment plant that's out close to the. Yeah, right over there. So this is, this is what this accomplishes for us. Jump in, Ramon.
What do, you know, besides, it matters a lot with expectancy, but Leanne brought up a point, it was a safety concern for us. The older it got, the more maintenance it needed, so. The old lift station had basically two holes, what we call a well. One was a dry well and a wet well. One, you have the fluid sewer, and the other one, the pumps were down there. It was 25 feet below ground. So anytime we had to go do that, we had to do confined space, so it was a safety concern. So this has taken its place. The pumps are submersible, so they're down there. As a matter of fact, today, we pulled one out, so we're bringing a truck and just pull it out instead of going down there and working on it. This is our main lift station. We have one other small lift station in town, so it's the west end of town. That's uncommon for a town our size. Means all the sewer lines are gravity fed to this position. And from here, they are pumped to our wastewater treatment plant, which is right over there where the streets are located. Our flows, you know, there's about 300, between 300 and 500,000 gallons a day of sewer that comes in here. We have two pumps, a primary and a secondary, and they'll kind of alternate. They want to run for 30 minutes and then they'll turn and, you know.
You use the water from the wastewater treatment plant for the crops here, for the farmland or?
Actually, the flowing water that we produce at the wastewater treatment plant, it's used at the golf course and the farmland that's adjacent to it. There are 70 acres at the golf course and there's 300 acres of the farmland adjacent to it.
You have your own truck that you can pull the pumps in?
We, just a truck with a winch, it's not, they're like around 400 pounds, so. This is rather new as well, it's little less than a year old. We're still learning some stuff on it as well. The biggest problem that we're having here is your flushables. Wipes, that's the biggest problem we're having. You know, I know it says flushable in the container. They do flush, but they don't dissolve, and that's a, that's a problem for us. It's a problem for us.
Not just wipes either, you know, we talk about Kleenexes, paper towels, things like that, that you think they're paper and you think they'll dissolve, they don't. When you think about it, toilet tissue is made to disintegrate and go away. But Kleenexes, you know, one of the advertisements is that, you know, it stays together, same way with paper towels and those kind of things. So those are things that we would encourage people to not flush, same way with those wipes. You know, they say flushable, but they're not pumpable. So those do cause problems for us. So we'd encourage everybody to do your part and not flush those things.
I don't know if anybody is aware of that problem.
And that's probably true, you know, I think we all do believe it because it's papered it. That's going to go away, but it doesn't. They're made to stay together.
Maybe we should educate the public. Yeah, somewhere.
And that's, yeah, and that's something we're considering, we need to do a better job of that. We didn't, we always known there was an issue, but I think with new, new pumps, we really find out what an issue is. Yes. So yes, we will try to do a better job of educating.
I'm not saying you're doing a bad job, I'm just.
No, but you're right, you know, people just don't know.
Make your life easier.
Yeah, we realize that, we realize that, yeah, we need to do a better job of letting folks know, okay, you know, help us out, don't flush that, you know.
Now you've got the millennials coming in.
Well, I will say this, you know, the projects that we're showing y'all tonight, these are things, these belong to the citizens of Milschew. You know, these are, these are projects that everybody should be really proud of. You know, the first thing we did, we painted elevated storage tanks, you know, that was one of the first things that we did just lately, I'm just talking about in the last few years. We painted the elevated storage tanks, you know, we built the new lift station. You know, added the stage at the park, you know, now the new ground storage tanks. You know, those are, these belong to the people who live in Milschew, Texas, the people who choose to live here, and adds to our quality of life, you know, and I think for all of us, you know, we're pretty passive. We don't think that much about having water every day whenever we get up and turning that faucet on, but those are things that don't happen by accident. And we've got folks that are looking after that and making sure that those things all work and to ensure that quality of life. So for citizens who live here, should be really extremely proud of the infrastructure that we have in Milschew. We do take it for granted, we do, we sure do. And that's easy, you know, and we understand that. You know, a great compliment for, for staff is that people can take that for granted, that we don't have problems with that stuff every day. So, you know, that's a good thing, but we should be appreciative of those things.
You're not required to have a backup generator?
We have a hookup, we have a portable generator that we can bring up. Yes. Yeah, it is, we are required to have some sort of energy source.
Alright, any more questions about this? Alright.
This is below ground, sir.
Educate us.
Okay, so if y'all remember. Okay, so, if y'all remember, about five years ago, in 2014, we started the grant application process to redo our airport, our runway and the apron here. It was a, turned out to be a $2.1 million project. The funds for that, if y'all remember, was a 90-10 match, so federal funds, 90% of that, 10% were city funds. So, you think 90-10 sounds like a great deal, and it is a great deal, and then whenever they said 2.1 million, and we're thinking, so that means 210,000, you know, for our part. But we believe it's been dollars that were well spent. Finally, finally, we're able to bid that project last, late summer. We're hoping for a fall start, but because, to accommodate Tex dot Aviation and also the general contractor, it actually started, what, first of May? March? Okay, in March, yes. Okay, so, the runway was actually taken up, it was taken down to the base and then rebuilt. And so, now you see a runway that has all-new asphalt from the base up. Same thing happened here with this apron. You see the markings here, those are for tie-downs for pilots that might be just flying in short term. We also have, y'all remember last year, we built a new hangar out here, the smaller one over here on this side. The larger hangar here is a privately owned hangar. And then behind us over here, we have eight T-hangers that are over here. We have 10-based aircraft, that makes us a basic airport, according to FAA standards. So, I think that helps with the council approving the building of that other hangar, ensures that we will always have 10-based aircraft here, which is a good thing. Yes, we also have a courtesy car, and we're gonna take you in here in just a second and show you the pilot's lounge, that we converted the apartment that was here into a pilot's lounge that we've received lots of great comments for. The courtesy car is used by folks that fly in, maybe just for the day. We actually have people that fly in, drive into town for a meal, and then come back out and fly out. It's kind of like the Sunday afternoon drive, that's what pilots do, you know, they want to fly, and so they'll fly somewhere to a location for a meal and then fly back out.
Drive to.
Yeah.
Field and eat.
That's right. Anyway, we're close to completion. There's still some things that are going on out here this week. We're hoping to be open sooner than what we originally had thought. Originally, we were talking June 25th, but that's gonna happen sooner than that. We have the preliminary markings on the airport. In about three weeks, they'll come back and do the final markings. They'll actually be with glass beams that are reflected for like nighttime flying. Out here, we've got fuel pump for folks that fly in and local pilots are able to get their plane fuel.
Where's that?
I'm sorry?
Where's that half gas company?
Actually, Dale Oil provides that for us. We order it and then they bring in for us what we need. Once upon a time, years ago, Western 66 provided fuel for pilots. You just had to call them and make arrangements and then they'd meet you out here. So, a few years ago, oh, maybe, it's been, I don't know, five, 10 years ago now, has it been 10, about five years ago, we put in a fuel tank, and it's actually, they can use their credit card and get fuel now. So, you want to add anything to what we're talking about here?
Thank you for covering everything, y'all. It has been a long-term project, but we're proud of it. We're identifying and walk through this after we.
We replace, you know, the funds are federal funds, but they come through Tex dot Aviation in Austin. So, those are folks that we've been working with, and they've held the purse strings on this, if you will, those funds come to them. And so, we've had the opportunity to work with them as well and with our local engineers out of Lubbock. And anyway, it's been, it's been a great project, and we're happy to be at this point. I think this, again, will serve us well for a long time. There's been some inconvenience for local pilots, just because the airport's been closed while this has been going on, but we've assured them that it'll be well worth the inconvenience.
City water.
City does provide water out here. It's not city water, but we have a well here. Let's go in, and let me just take the opportunity to show y'all the pilot's lounge while we're
So, originally, this was an apartment, efficiency apartment that was out here, and then as time went on, it was hard to keep someone out here, you know, lots of times we'd have single police officers that would rent this or something. But as time went on, then it set empty for a long, long time. So, we came in and actually made it into a pilot's lounge, and we get a lot of use for that. We've got an ADA accessible restroom, have a refrigerator here, we keep water, things like that in there. Folks flying in sometimes just have a quick meeting here and then fly out, so it's been used a lot. Here, we have a visitor's guide, kind of, some of the attractions in town, also gives hotel motel information, restaurant information, points of interest in the area. We actually have some folks, and I can't remember, Ramon remind me, the folks that fly in from, is it Ohio, Iowa? They meet the folks from Georgia.
Iowa.
Iowa. So, they had figured out that Mewshu is halfway for them, and so, these folks, they fly here and spend the night in Mewshu and visit with these friends, and then they all fly back home. So, that's pretty cool.
Sure.
So, anyway, so this has been a good thing. We have the courtesy car here. The courtesy car is actually a car that was a seized vehicle that came through our law, local law enforcement, and we were able to identify it as a car that was in good shape that could be parked here, just a courtesy car, lots and lots of airports have that. And so, we've been able to do that, and it gets a lot of use. We've got some really positive comments that are left in our book. We have them to check in and check out, you know, whenever they use it. So, anyway, just another one of the things that we've done for the airport here. Anyway, it's turned out to be a good thing.
Who's in charge of keeping the gas?
Well, between local pilots, Ramon does that, I do that, you know, we kept to check to make sure, you know, if the oil needs changing, we do that, we'll take it through the car wash occasionally and just wipe the dust off. Really, I mean, no one has ever left it in bad shape. And, but like I say, it's just, you know, we're just this far from town, we need something. If not, once upon a time, what we would do, we found out somebody was flying in, we'd actually come out and pick them up, take them into town, do whatever they needed to, or, there are some folks that keep vehicles out here, the hospital keeps a vehicle here a lot for their management company, so they fly in for the day, have a meeting or whatever, and use their car, and so, anyway, it's worked out well for us. Anyway, it's a great use of the space. And then during this project, while this has been going on, we had several meetings out here, use this, some of the project representatives, they use this kind of as their office while they were here. Anyway, it's been a good space for things like that. And we have an agreement with Cannon Air Force Base, and they use our runway for just touchdowns and some of their trainings and such, and so, they brought, what, four or five guys over, met with them, and they provided some of this information to the Air Force, and anyway, it's a great partnership with the, I mean, how do you tell the Air Force now?
Very proud of it.
Yeah, yeah. I think we'll serve the citizens of Mewshu for a long, long time.
This is good, these are things we don't see every day.
That's right, that's right. And citizens don't, you know, unless you have reason to come to the airport, you're not coming out here, and we know that. But for the folks that use it, and it's another one of those quality of life things, you know.
We have a good group of people on the airport board.
We do, we sure do, and they've been very supportive, you know, they're all local pilots, and they've been very supportive of the work going on out here. And look for, I think in the future, we'll see some things that the airport advisory board's gonna be doing, some events that they want to hold and some things like that that will even enhance this even more and make the public even more aware, so. All right, well, we'll head back to town then.
All right, I want to thank Leanne and Ramon and Zanna and the chief for their accompanying us and giving us the guided tour. The things that we got to see today have been a great investment for the city and for the public. It's things that you as citizens sometimes take for granted. It is, it is things that the council and the staff and the city employees work diligently to come up with to invest your tax dollars for your quality of life and for your future. And it's things that you as the public don't necessarily see on a daily basis, but it's things that you should really be proud of, so. Thanks again for everything you've done, and everything looks great, and so, is anybody have anything else? If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all, man.